Brings us to item one minutes, approval of the minutes of the board of commissioners meeting held on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through May twenty first, twenty twenty four. And I'll note for commissioners, there is an amendment for payroll.
I move to approve, um, can I do claims A and B as well as the amendment for payroll?
All right.
I'm make a motion, approve A and B and the amendments, including payroll. Can I do that? Is that okay, John? You okay with that or do I need to do them separate?
Sorry, it was, uh, let's see, so A and B and payroll and where does, uh, let's see, are we under claims yet, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right. And you read them all into the record?
He just read A and I'm saying A and B and the amendment to payroll.
Okay. And where does the amendment to payroll appear? Just so I'm fully up.
Separate document I got.
And that was spoken into there.
Yeah, that, that's fine to do.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion to approve A, B, and the payroll disbursements.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item, the claims item A and B as well as payroll. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item two C, approval of a claim to the mediation center in the amount of eight thousand and fifty dollars.
Move approval?
Second.
A motion and a second? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Ametson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two D, approval of a claim to El Centro de las Americas in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Move approval?
We have a motion and a second to approve item D. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two E, approval of a claim to the Indian Center Incorporated in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty cents.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Two F, approval for claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the ninety day time period provided Nebraska revised statute twenty-three dash one thirty-five. They are for Unico Group Incorporated, dated, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, for a total of eighty thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flouride? Oh, excuse me. Motion carries. Brings us to item three, our consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, there will be, these items will be approved as one single vote of the board of commissioners. These items are the approval of A, right away contracts of the following. Hold a K M Trotner Trust, Olive Creek Road and South one hundred forty-eighth Street in the amount of one thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Helen and Dale Moss, Branch Oak Road and North one hundred twelve Street in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars. B, utility permit two four, excuse me, two five four zero, allowing Windstream to relocate existing buried facilities. A C Lancaster County Project thirty-two dash oh one, located at nine, North Ninety-eighth Street and Adam Street, and the Forty-ninth and Walker Exchange. C, utility permits with OPT key networks for, to install fiber optic for the following. Permit number two five four one, two five four two, two five four three, two five four four, and two five four five.
I move approval of the consent items?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Flor, excuse me. Motion carries. Brings us to item four, new business. Item four A, resolution in the matter of transferring appropriations from the general fund miscellaneous budget to the district court budget. The amount to be transferred is five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
All right. Good morning, Dennis Meyer, Budget and Fiscal Director. Uh, this resolution is kind of step two of us finishing out the current fiscal year. So we did a resolution, I think, within the last couple of weeks to pick up a couple business units. This is the next business unit, um, that we need to transfer additional appropriations to, so that we kind of keep that budget, um, in line and, uh, within budget. So hopefully after today's, um, we will take a look at remaining budgets that are left, but I think we've, uh, I think we've kind of hit the big ones to, to kind of get us through the end of June.
So just, uh, Dennis has kept us informed on this. Uh, at this point, this will make about one point one million we've had to transfer over to meet the budgets for this current.
It, it will. It will. And, and again, when we, you know, the, the, the thing that is driving the budgets this year is we, we did a, a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, transfer to the county court. We're going to do a five hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer to the district court. And for the most part, it's coming down to legal services, um, is, is what's driving everything right now.
Very good. And this looks like it without, we can't always predict, but we look like this will be the last one, Dennis, for this.
We will, we will do one more because I know we've got a few smaller ones that, that we have to clean up. The reason I come early for these is because their budget authority is getting close to zero and we don't like to build, we don't like to make payments out of any business unit that doesn't have the spending authority.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four V, appointments to the county veteran services committee. There are two and I'll read them both. Uh, one is for Martin Neal for a five-year term from July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. And the second is for Tony Aguano for the remainder of an unexpired five-year term from May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
All right. Any of these, either of these gentlemen here this morning, just want to check and see if they came down. We want to recognize them by not seeing them here, which is understandable.
We are always grateful for these volunteers who step into these positions. I move approval.
Well, second that because both of these folks are good. They, we were, uh, this was discussed last, uh, Thursday?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, one was, um, recommended by the VFW and the other received a recommendation from the American Legion, so they have been vetted too, so. Motion and a second to approve these appointments. Um, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four C is an agreement with the Nebraska Administrative Office of Courts and Probation for two probation officers to provide pre-sentence investigation report services. The cost of the county is seventy-five thousand two hundred and five dollars.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Um, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four D is acceptance of the state grant or twenty-five CB zero five one seven from the Nebraska Crime Commission in the amount of one million one hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars for Lancaster County community aid.
Good morning, Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County. This funding is, uh, funding that is predetermined amount that we get based upon our population of youth between the ages of ten to seventeen in our community. This funding again goes out into the community to provide community services. While Lancaster County, the City of Lincoln, does diversion services, offers diversion services for youth in the juvenile justice system, the magic happens in the community, right, with our community partners? And that's exactly where this funding goes.
I would move approval and I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next up is four E, a grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the Lincoln Lancaster County Investigative Narcotics Cooperative, LINK, in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Good morning, Commissioner John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. These two contracts are to, uh, fund prosecutions, um, for, related to drug cases that are prosecuted by the, the task force. And the, uh, the two periods are upcoming, I believe we're past one, but then there, the second one goes through, and that would be agenda item F. Uh, the second one, I believe, goes, uh, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, but we're a little behind the cycle and just getting these two, uh, cooperation agreements moving forward.
Great to have this Department of Justice funding for this. I move approval of item E.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item E. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four F is a got, grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the Lancaster County, excuse me, the Lincoln Lancaster County Investigative Narcotics Cooperative in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I move approval? Second.
Motion and a second to approve item F. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I do have a question for John or Dave. Um, we have an individual here that I think has some insight on item C. Would it be okay to have, or we? We keep moving. All right. Very good. Mr. Clerk, we'll move forward.
Item four G, a grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department for the coordinated response to reducing domestic violence program in the amount of forty-five thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
Good morning, Sarah with the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County Human Services. Uh, this particular funding is federal funding that is passed through the Crime Commission. It's Violence Against Women's Act funding and it goes to the police department for an investigator to specialize in domestic violence cases.
Very good. I move approval and I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four H, work and financial plan pursuant to the cooperative service agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal Plant and Health Inspection Service, Wildlife Services for the Wildlife Damage Management Program. The cost of the county is not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred and six dollars and seventy-six cents.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four I, setting the salary for Race Hole in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, seventy-two cents. Step five, as the emergency management training schedule is effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Good morning, Jim David Saber, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. Race was not, uh, available to join us this morning, but during the application and the interview process, he certainly distinguished himself as a leading candidate based on his military experience, practical work history, and formal education. I think he's uniquely qualified for this position. He actually served as an intern for us in the spring of twenty twenty-two when he was finishing his bachelor's degree at UNO. So hiring him at this step, uh, competitive package, uh, and it gives room for growth in the coming years.
We'd move approval?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Um, any discussion, any questions for Jim? Jim, thank you. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four J is the contract with Vasa Corporation for Health Department Storage Garage. The cost of the county is not to exceed three hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars with ARPA funds.
Good morning. My name is Brock Kennish. I'm the Division Manager, Environmental Public Health, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. Um, what we have for you today, um, I'm seeking approval for this contract to build the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Emergency Response Garage. This is the North Forty-eighth Street Transfer Station. This is, has to go Lincoln's Hazardous Waste Center and the proposed location, uh, it's going to be that spot right there. Going the general outline of the structure, which is going to be a forty by eighty, uh, garage in essence with three south facing doors and poured concrete. Um, that's what's going to be happening there as far as the structure itself. We were here, uh, I was here, uh, last year, uh, with regard to the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln Lancaster County for approval of four hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds for the structure. At that point in time, it was approved and we've been moving forward and now we're at a point where we can actually, uh, start building and hear the, generally the design of it.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. Generally, this is, uh, what it's going to be looking, looking like, nothing too fancy, but generally just a structure to house our emergency response and hazmat, uh, vehicles as well as DOT spec containers, um, water, oil, uh, separators, as well as our emergency response rig and a few of our response trailers. And as a reminder, our emergency response team at the health department, we respond twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, city and county. Um, we help out mutual aid. Um, and that's, that's what I've got. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions for Brock?
I remember when you presented to us and, and I was glad to learn, but didn't, had no idea, some of the things that you store there and, and that's, so it'll be great. Um, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Yeah. It's one of those things that you never want to use, but when something goes in the, into the streams or the water, it's, it's a big deal, so. Uh, any further comments? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four K, memorandum of understanding with Snap-on Industrial for vehicle lifts with garage and fleet maintenance equipment. The estimated cost of the county is to not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ametson?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, motion carries. Item four L, a contract with Constructors Incorporated to provide replacement for County Bridge Q one-ten. Cost of the county is not to exceed one million seven hundred and forty thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Larry Lake, Lancaster County Engineering, um, uh, yeah, this is, uh, Bridge Q one-ten. It's out on Pine Lake Road, just west of one hundred and thirty-fourth. Um, bridge has been closed for a while. Pam could tell, tell you exactly how long it's been closed?
I cannot.
Okay, but it's been a while, probably two thousand nineteen, I'm guessing if that's correct. So, um, yeah, we've, uh, the, the contract with the constructors to do the work and then also this summer, if there's any silver lining, we're cooperating, it's, it's something like this, we're cooperating with the university, they're going to do destructive testing on the existing structure in July, so hopefully they'll learn something to make our bridges better in the future.
Okay, so actually, um, just a quick question. Any idea about when that can begin? You do the destructive testing in July.
Right. And, and, uh, okay, with, with the environmental, um, requirements, uh, with bridges, you, you have birds and, and bats that can build nests and whatever bats build, I'm not exactly sure. Um, November first would be the, the, the start date and then we would expect them to be finished, uh, depending on the year we have, but be finished in the spring, uh, next year. So, um, you know, now they always have the option to start early, but if they do that, they've got to do the, um, the testing to see if there's any birds or, uh, the, uh, can't remember the word, reviews, uh, for the environmental to, to see if they can start early. We put that on them. So they can start early if they choose and if they don't have any work, they may do that, but I would expect them to start first of November.
Well, it's one of the things that we have been waiting for, for a long time and I would move approval.
Second.
We'll still invite you to grand opening.
Good. Thank you.
Just so you can be there. Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, public comment. Those wishing to speak in items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone wishing to speak?
Number one, we, we rewind the clock to the summer of twenty twenty-two in the Republican State Convention in Carney. Eric Underwood is running for state chair. Ron Schmidt is running against him. Five hundred delegates, plus or minus, cast a vote. Those paper votes are collected and handed over to Wayne Benner so he can count them behind closed doors with his secret software, super secret software vote counting tabulators, quote unquote. For some strange security reason, no one is allowed to even watch the machine, quote unquote, count the votes. The results, so-called, come quickly and Schmidt is declared the winner by a narrow margin. The crowd quickly gets wind that the count was conducted in secret and because the margin was narrow, a large contingent begins creating a commotion. Show us your work, Mr. Benner. We demand a recount. We demand an audit. Benner refuses, as always. But then suddenly Krista Yocum stands up, which surprises everyone because they thought she was a Democrat. And why is a Democrat at a Republican convention? But she says you all just need to trust Wayne Benner. He is dedicated to fair and accurate elections, just like she said last July in twenty twenty-two or twenty-three. The crowd boos. Of course, it didn't happen that way at all. The votes were counted by hand and each candidate was allowed a watcher of his choosing to look out for their respective interests during the count. There was no commotion or so-called insurrection because the vote count was transparent and verifiable by all that were in the room. The big question is, why do so many in the NEGOP recognize the value of transparent and verifiable elections in party business, but not in public elections? The party could easily decide that they are going to conduct their own primary and general elections. I mean, all everyone has to do is request a mail-in ballot and then call all Republicans together and hand count their votes. What's the secretary going to do about it? Short story number two. I begin by quoting Todd Wilgin's fake book post from last Friday. Quote, "The Lancaster County Election Commission will keep the ballots for the primary election for twenty-two months as required by federal law. These ballots constitute the cast vote record. There is no requirement to keep an additional record of images of the same ballots," end quote. He then prohibits any public count on that fake book post. The fear factor in our SOS and Lancaster County election offices must be going through the roof. And why? Because they know they are guilty of sin. Todd Wilgin obviously doesn't know the first thing about pro, uh, excuse me, about cast vote records. As dumb as that statement was and is, he's not smart enough to have made it up. He, it had to come from the SOS office. The cast vote record is an entirely separate record from our paper ballots and serves a different purpose. I can give you all the proof from NIST, the, uh, Election Assistance Commission and ESNS manuals, but here's the funny thing. Just last July, before this board, Wayne Benner said, "Cast vote records are a capability of the system we have purchased. It is not something we utilize." In other words, he's saying that the cast vote record is something other than the ballots. So who's lying? Is it Benner? Is it Wilgin? Is it Evnan? Is it ESNS manuals? Because they say something entirely different. Or is it all of the above? Short story number three. In March of twenty twenty-two, Wayne Benner tells Hamilton County Clerk, "It is against the law to hand count ballots unless the counting machine is not working." But in July of twenty twenty-three, again, before this board, Benner said, and I quote, "Under state law, the counting method is approved by the Secretary of State. So if the Lancaster County Election Commission wants to submit a plan to switch to hand counts, it would be evaluated and either approved or disapproved." Thank you, Matt, for helping with those answers. Thank you, Matt, for helping with those answers, because you ask questions. The duplicity is astounding. Our proof of election fraud is the fact that Evnan, Benner, and Wilgin are defrauding us of transparency and verifiability and verifiability in our elections, which most of you seem to be happy with. You shouldn't be because it's criminal, and it's criminal because it's unconstitutional. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on public record? Seeing none, we will move on.
Announcements, Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, at eight thirty a.m. in Room One Twelve of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, at nine a.m. in Room One Twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two four four one seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L and K TV. L and K TV is available on ALO Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L and K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item seven is adjournment.
I move we adjourn. Second?
Motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries.
With that, we are adjourned. I will now call to order the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Clerk?
Location announcement of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for, excuse me, is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. These materials can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Move approval. Second?
Motion and second to approve the meetings, minutes. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions. Second?
Motion and second to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three are the twenty twenty-four four fifty-one exemption applications on real and personal property. There are three that I'll read into the record for Crossbridge Christian Church, Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, and Heartland Bible Church.
Very good. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cory Beatty with the Assessor Registered Deeds Office. As you recall, these three applications were before you a couple of weeks ago, and you asked them to be held pending further information. Our recommendations have not changed since that time. The applications for Crossbridge Christian Church and Good Shepherd Lutheran Church, those are partial exemptions based on the fact that they are leasing space to four-profit childcare centers. So those portions of the property will remain taxable. And then Heartland Bible Church, unless some new information has come forward, we would recommend you deny that application.
Well, the application shows a new use for it. It says it's for a parsonage.
It also says, I think we gathered information, that says it was not being used for anything at that time. So on February first, yeah, per Adam Fisher, no one is living in the house, and they didn't know what they were going to do with the property at that time. That's the last bit of information that we had.
Hi, Scott. Sorry, I about, don't have a voice here today. Scott Heck, Heartland Bible Church. Yes, since our last meeting, we have turned in a, this morning, a new application for that property. We are looking to use it for charitable religious use, to rent it out while we are waiting to put parking in. And we've talked to a property manager, and we know a figure of what it could rent for. We'd be renting it for less than half of what we could rent for, for someone who's engaged in ministry with our local church, who could really use that for that ministry purpose.
So you put in an application this morning, Scott?
Yeah, I gave it to. Does it make?
I guess, I got it from, he gave it to the county clerk.
Okay, so the appraiser's office has not seen it yet. What's the deadline, Cory, on receiving applications?
Take action by June first.
Okay.
You know, our recommendation is going to stand based on the information that we got at the time of application. This has come forward. Now it's up to you to determine if you feel like the property deserves exemption.
None of us have seen it, but we do have the.
I had a chance to talk to the pastor in between, and he asked me some good questions about it. I mean, it seems to me like a parsonage like that is being, is being used for the right purpose, so.
It would seem to me that what we ought to do is to be able to delay that particular one until all parties have the opportunity to look at it. I think that if we were to take action on this particular part today, it would be premature.
I agree. It looks like there is evidence that we should, but I want it to work through our process.
It's got to work through the process. I think we have a protocol.
Well, I think, let's, let's walk through this, as I understand it, and we have people here who can help me. We have the recommendation from the appraiser's office based on the information you have received. We have, and the deadline for making a decision is June first. Okay, so here as the Board of Equalization, we now have some information that was not available to the appraiser's office, was presented to the clerk's office today. I do have another follow-up question for you, Cory. If you had received this information that, what Pastor Scott is presenting us, would it change your recommendation? If you'd received it last month or whenever, that they are now using it for the purposes that he has described?
So we're making our recommendation based on the information that we receive at the time of application. Anything that comes in after that time, it's really up to the Board of Equalization to determine if it, if it meets the, the level of exemption.
If you had received this information at the time of application?
It may have changed our recommendation. I'm not sure, since I haven't really seen it. But, yeah, at this point in time, you need to, to make a determination based on the information that you have before you.
Okay, and if, if we approve this exemption today, would it still come back for review with you next year? You tend to, we get this list every year.
There are annual reaffirmations, yeah, and we can review, you know, exemption cases at any point in time, especially if there, if we feel like there's a change. And the Department of Revenue will also be looking at all the exemptions too.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So there is a further follow-up. I guess, I get the timing is less than ideal, Commissioners. I mean, it puts us in a somewhat controversial spot. But I'm inclined to say that we have the information, we have the testimony here of the pastor, that it is being used for what would be a tax-exempt purpose. Therefore, I think our responsibility, the way I see it, as the Board of Equalization, would be to grant the exemption, understanding that it's going to get reviewed by the appropriate parties as time goes on.
I would agree with you on that. So I'll make a motion to, I got to make sure I get this right.
Well, wait, do we, okay, do you want the motion first?
I have one more question for Cory.
Let's do that. I mean, by all means, let's walk through this.
So, so if receiving this new information today, and the clerk's office then would get it to your office, is it, would, would your recommendation change? I mean, you don't know because you haven't seen the information, and I realize it's not really fair to ask you. And then it could come back to us in a BOE meeting next week, or?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could review it based on the use of the property, if we feel like it's not being used for an exempt purpose, yeah.
This is a.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is actually what I would prefer, is that we, that you do have a chance to review it. What is today? Today is the twenty first?
Twenty first.
We don't have another BOE before.
Another BOE is the challenge.
But you said that really you guys just make the recommendation based on an application, correct?
Correct. The information that we have at the point in time of the application. So really, it's up to you at this point.
Day. No, I didn't say that. Well, yeah, I, yes, again, any other? It's all coming about a little bit later than preferable. That's, that's the challenge. And that normally it would go through the appraiser or the assessor's office, and then we have the information that's been provided.
I'm just actually wondering, does this create a precedent?
I don't think it necessarily creates a precedent. The precedent is, we asked, are you using this for the appropriate service? They had provided some information that said, "We don't know." Now they're saying, "We are using it for appropriate religious service." So the precedent would, could be, would be, should be. Once you're using it appropriately, then you qualify for the exemption.
Yeah, this one was one we asked for more information on a couple of weeks ago at our last meeting. Yes, Scott?
If I could add something else, it's, it's been a long and thoughtful and prayerful process for us as a church through all this. And we, we had to even talk through since our last meeting, okay, is this how we want to use it? Is there someone available who'd want to use it in this way? And both answers to that were yes. Our long-term goal, which is on the listing as well, is it'll be entirely working, but we don't know how long that process will take with the appropriate city authorities. But until such time, we also want to use it for charitable religious ministry housing.
Okay, any other questions? Are we ready for, we're probably ready for a motion now.
Okay, so I move that we partially approve, as recommended, A and B, Crossbridge and Good Shepherd, and I, and we fully approve the Heartland Bible application listed as C.
Okay, so we maintain the recommendations for A and B?
Correct.
The partial exemption. All right.
I would like to make an amendment to that and take the, do the partial ones initial first.
I.
Okay.
So that would be just a different motion.
I'm, yeah, here we go.
Because there needs to be a motion in a second before you can amend it. So I'm making the motion for A and B to follow and C to be approved.
And Commissioner Schulte, I think Commissioner Amundson offered maybe a friendly amendment to partially approve A and B, but drop C for the time being, and maybe take it up separately. I believe that would be the case.
Yeah, that is a friendly amendment.
That sounds right.
Okay, and if you would accept that friendly amendment, then, then the board could vote on that. Otherwise, we could proceed to a vote to partially approve A and B, fully give the exemption to C, and then if that were to fail, there could then be another motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to partially approve A and B.
I'll second that.
We have a second. We have a motion to approve the partial exemption for items A and B. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries?
I make a motion to approve C for Heartland Bible Church.
I'm going to second it. I, I do, I do think we're on solid ground here to grant this exemption, given the information that's put before us this morning. So, any further discussion, Commissioners? With that, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
No.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Then the motion carries to grant that exemption.
Thank you for coming out.
Well, we appreciate your time.
Well, I appreciate your time, and, yeah, thank you very much.
Please don't come the last minute next year.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Pastor.
Commissioners, that brings us to item four, our public hearing. We have the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications for Cedars Youth Services and Vital Services Incorporated.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Brings us to item five, action on the following, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval, move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption application. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item six, public comment. Those wishing to speak in items related to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Anyone here to speak on Board of Equalization issues? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Last item I have is adjournment.
I move we adjourn. Second?
Motion and second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries.